I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today is October 1st, 2012, at 7:00 PM, the Redwood meeting for common councils called order. This time pressing all cell phones or electronic devices if they make noises beside this place. Roll call, Bridget.
Erin.
Erin.
Erin. Lynn.
Erin.
Lynn.
Erin.
Jane.
Erin.
Thank you. Approve the amendments from September 4th meeting, the Redwood meeting. As I have delivered to you, have you seen the changes or amendments that you made? Institutions. Hearing done of the petition motion, approve the amendments as presented to you.
Sure. Sorry.
Most favors the eye?
Aye.
No, same sign. Hearing now, thank you. Motion passes. Old business. Mark Fox, Camper. During the trash ordinance, we're going to be submitting that statement.
Everybody should have received it, or in their packet, being proposed for adoption. There's been several revisions and updates in the last couple months trying to get everything in order. And I think we're awfully close, and this is presented to you tonight for first reading.
Discussion.
I guess the only question I had, I was talking to Mark real quick right before the meeting actually had it was, under the section, was it 93.03 where it says dumping prohibited? I don't know if we should say something about that this excludes the, you know, the regular trash pickup or... I'm trying to find what section that was. Basically, but the placement for collection section, or maybe reference that it's excluded, except for that section, basically. But basically, if you read it, it says you can't put your trash out near the street, pretty much. You know what I mean, so that's why I was saying, I think we should exclude, basically. They should be, should say that except for when we're picking it up, basically. I'm not sure exactly how you want to word it, but maybe some kind of comment in there that this excludes, you know, pickup.
Jamie, this is my three, part of three.
Yes, sir.
On page one.
Yeah, it's on the first page, at the very bottom. It basically says it shall be unlawful to dump or place garbage or FUs in any alley, basically, or street, curbside, basically, or roadside. You know, and that's where people usually place it for collection. So this should, you know, I'm just saying, maybe we should put something in here that this excludes collection.
Well, you could say except for section 93.13, which says placement for collection.
Right, that's, that's what, yeah, absolutely, that's all I was getting at, so maybe put something like that in there.
So you want me to put at the bottom excluding...
Or except for.
Except for. Except for the location.
Just say except for section 93.13.
Let's just go put except for the location discussed in section 93. 93.13 is then verified.
Yeah, that's, that's all, well, that's all I was saying, is I think we should just reference that in that section.
That way, just clear some of it.
So except for section 93.13.
I would, to be clear, I would probably suggest language that says except for as provided in section 93.13. Except for as provided.
Okay.
That would give a clear cross-reference point. That was my only comment, I'm sorry.
I, I would, you know, put it up and clarify it, question detail, and so I, I would move passive on first reading as amended.
Second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Mr. Please, please.
Erin.
Good.
Erin.
Yes.
Jane.
Yes.
Lynn.
Yes.
Lynn.
Yes.
Thank you.
Clarification, now, do we do anything with an additional between now and next month? We don't advertise until after the third reading, correct?
Well, but most likely, we will probably do second, third reading, could, could possibly do second, third reading, and next month's meeting.
And again, this goes back to statutorily, you only have to have, you know, more than one reading, so we've, Greensburg has traditionally done three. So.
Quite often, we'll suspend the rules and have all three reads in one night, or we'll have one reading, one month, and the next two following.
There's a monetary penalty in this.
Right.
Yeah, there's not a monetary penalty, there's just a minimum for services provided by the city as far as people who don't comply. Do you understand that? That's the minimum.
You know, maybe it's just in the way it's been there in the past, it doesn't have...
I'm just asking because I want to make sure we comply, if I need to have to advertise it in the next 30 days for final passage, if that occurs.
I certainly would.
I, I would think we'd want to pass it next month, I, I agree.
Yes.
I would, in that case, given the, given the inclusion of a monetary component, I would probably recommend advertising that.
You want to take care of the, I'll make the correction, report it to you, and you'll take care of the advertising. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Next item under new business, Mr. Chad Miles, ETC, update on coverage of Greensburg.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor Herbert, I appreciate the invitation to come and talk about our expansion in Greensburg. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Chad Miles, I'm the CEO of Enhanced Talk Communications Corporation. And looking back, when Mayor Herbert invited me to come and speak tonight, I just went back in history. For those of you that don't know, we started our company here in Greensburg in about 2003, bought building, started building fiber infrastructure, and opened for service in 2005. So in the last seven years, we have built fiber to the home, both residentially and to your business community, covering roughly about 80% of the entire area, the area originally we, we had hoped to serve. And in the past year, that buildout has slowed in a bit. This meeting is particularly timely as we're getting ready, in the middle of budgets for 2013 fiscal year. And certainly, the city of Greensburg is, is a high priority for us. Certainly, it's been a pleasure for us to do business over here for the last seven years, and, and we've done our best to be the, to, to be a great corporate citizen as well, and show that community support, so I certainly hope we've met your expectations, and if not, please, please let me know. We have a couple barriers, you know, that have slowed the investment for us over here in Greensburg. Some are out of our control, primarily, the result revolve around increased competition. We have gone back into the infrastructure we have built, and had to reinvest capital to make sure that, that we are providing the best product possible, and providing our customer with the best user experience possible. So in providing voice, video, and broadband are three primary products. The bandwidth demand, as you can imagine, the last seven years, has, has really gone through the roof, so we continue to, to reinvest in our infrastructure to make sure that, that we're providing every customer with all the bandwidth they need. The cable TV side, the, the cost of content has continually increased year over year, which we have very little control of, given the size of company we, we are. So when the content providers, such as Fox or ESPN, essentially dictate what they're, what we're going to pay them for subscriber, we essentially have to, to, to change our business model to accommodate that. So those technology changes and so forth, we, we continue to reinvest every year, whether you don't see it in, in new areas, but to continue to keep our product to the best possible standard. We're continuing to, to invest a significant amount of cash every year in the city of Greensburg. We have, our penetration goals in the areas that, that we are in are a little bit lower than we'd like to see before we start building additional areas. I mentioned that we covered nearly 80% of our intended area. That last 20% is clearly the most expensive for us to, to, to serve. And so we, you know, we will pull that information and create a business model, and hopefully, we can make it, you know, hopefully, we can make a case to, to provide service to some of these smaller pockets or, or areas that we've, we've missed in the past, and can go back and, and pick up. There's been some recent policy changes within the FCC that has essentially changed our, what we call our competitive local exchange areas, and the way that, that carriers were compensated each other to use each other's network has changed, and it's had a negative impact on, at least on our residential business model for Greensburg, as well as all the other, other areas that we serve. And so there's, there's some uncertainty in our industry overall that's, that's weighing in on our decisions to, to move into additional areas. Some construction delays, you know, we're the last player into Greensburg, and so you, you had the incumbent carrier Verizon, and now Frontier, and Comcast has been here for a while, and so as the last player in, we get that little spot on the pole. So whenever we get on a new pole, and 95% of the poles in Greensburg are Duke Energy poles, to keep, make sure those are not in violation, we, we depend on Duke Energy to make those changes. And they do the best job that they can possibly do, but it just takes time to move those other folks in a, in a position where we can be on that pole as well. So that's certainly a, a timing issue for us, we have to budget well in advance, understanding that a lot of areas we want to get to if we're going to go overhead, that Duke Energy plays a big part, and, and I would say that they, they've been fantastic to work with, but it is certainly a factor in, in some of the ways. So I, I think I've given you a bunch of excuses, more than anything else, but I, I do want to say that we're, we're very committed to the city of Greensburg. We're rolling out a 4G LTE network, should be up by the end of, end of the year, which will encompass not only Greensburg, but the outlying areas of Decatur County as well. It will be a fixed wireless internet that, if we're going to roll it out with speeds of 3.6 Mhz, will be available to everybody. That does not solve some of the areas, video competition areas will not offer video, and so we're still working on that. I think that, you know, at this point, I'm really not prepared to, to commit to building a certain area. I would certainly like to take any feedback that any of you have regarding how we're operating over here, or any particular area that you believe needs prioritized, and we'll do the best we can. Certainly always open to, to sending surveys, or doing some pre-sales efforts in some of these areas, and gathering enough data to see if we can actually put it in a business model, and it, and it actually works. As I said, you know, we're, we're right in the middle of our budget process, and, and we're making a decision. We're certainly going to reinvest in the city of Greensburg in 2013. We're just not 100% certain where and how much at this point.
Chad, where's the majority of the territory that's not covered so far in Greensburg?
I have, I brought a map with me, I wasn't sure the format of the meeting is probably not practical to, I don't know if you want to pass it around, or how, how you'd like to do that.
There, you can just point to it and explain to us the sections.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Basically, it's the red areas that are currently uncertain, so we've got some areas down north of Cleveland South, parts of Park Road area out here, just to the east of the high school, and then parts up here towards the movie theater.
Could you step in front?
Oh, yes, sorry.
So we have, you know, quite a bit of interest from some of these areas, and, you know, this is the original plan that we intended to provide service to in the very beginning. And so as you can see, you know, some of the density is here, we've got some communities out here that have showed some interest. This is up at the airport, and all of course, you know, we're, as I said, we're trying to not just, you know, pick and choose areas. We're trying to have density, number one, understand, you know, it's a business model. So hopefully, eventually, we can cover this whole map in green. I'm looking for somebody in the sort of, you know, you can see over the last seven years, we've built this.
First of all, you have been a good corporate citizen, we're, we're pleased that ETC's here in Greensburg, and you have definitely made a commitment to community, I appreciate that. Secondly, you know, I've, I've been served, so I'm, I'm happy in that respect. But some others have not been yet, and realizing that, you know, it is a business model, understand that. But I'm also told that down Park Road, for example, that's one of the areas that is in that red down here on the south side.
Right to where I live.
Yeah.
That's where I live.
And, and I know that there's a trunk line that's going right down there, or I'm told there is, I don't know if that, if there is, I believe that there is. And that, has there been any attempt, because I know of one customer at least, or potential customer, that would like to be served, and is called, and, and is, they're told, well, we have no plans, and the trunk line's right in front of his house. I mean, there's, everything's there to, so I don't know why, you know, he's not at least signed up, or in that little area or section where he is. So I guess what I'm saying is, I, I think, I don't know all the business plans of it, but I think you have a lot of customers out there that are just waiting to, to join. And seven years, I know is not a long time in the scope of many things, but, you know, when, when you came, you came with the intention, and obviously, your business intention was to cover the area, right, at least that's what you hope to do. Theoretically, you want to get every person in Greensburg to subscribe, right? So I guess what I'm asking is, is there any kind of a anticipation of when these people, particularly in that area there, my fellow councilmen, you'll probably attest to, are looking for that option? And when that might be possible, particularly when it seems like it's right there. Now, maybe there's a reason why it can't be expanded into households from that point, but...
One thing to understand is, there's certainly a difference between transport, fiber, and distribution point. So our home hall of transport, we just can't cut into it like we could a copper cable in the old days, with splice incident. So we have to have a distribution point where we set a cabinet or electronics, which has to stick in more extensively, just in transport. So because the trunk line is in front, doesn't necessarily mean...
I think there's, I think there's actually a, a unit there, and I know that part of that was come off and went around his house, or just stuffed up somewhere. Yeah.
Well...
And so it's ready to go on, it's more, at least, again, through my untrained eye and inexperienced in that area, it would appear.
Well, we certainly have, you know... Excuse me, could you step in front of the lines? Sorry, thank you. We certainly have cases, you know, that pop up, that it's hard to understand, want to have service on one side of the street and, and on the other, that, and that's been happening since we started this in, in 2005. And, and, you know, we do our best, but, you know, the electronics and the way that they are, you know, we certainly don't deny service to people that, that want service, so we do everything we can to, to provide them service. In this particular instance, I'd be happy to take that customer's name, and, and see if we can, we can do something there. Park Road has certainly come up, it's in our discussions weekly, and, you know, we're certainly going to take a look at that. You know, I think maybe the, the best solution here, I understand too, that we have a, a density of households. And so we think we can make a return, we're basically making an educated guess on how many of those folks are going to subscribe to our service. So if we build an entire neighborhood, and we only get 40% of the customers in their every, every third house, that doesn't, that doesn't fit very well. So some of the changes that have happened in the industry, and, and how we, we look at residential markets anymore, have, have made us much more aware of, of those risks, and have slowed that process. I think, at this point, the best thing for, for us to do is to probably survey every household in the remaining areas, and, and just see where we have the, you know, the biggest interest. Because we seem to have, you know, pockets of, you know, four or five people that are really interested in, in halls routinely, and, you know, and that maybe their, their 30 neighbors don't, and so we get a lot of word of mouth, as you can imagine, that, that type of thing. But, you know, I think the best way for us to attack this is, is to just actually get it on paper and see what kind of interest we have. Whether it's just a survey, or, you know, I would take it so far as a, as some sort of pre-sale effort, you know, mailing, or, you know, we can even go door to door, if, if you like. You know, and, and we'll plug those numbers into a business model, and, and if it, if it works, we'll do it. And we're certainly, we certainly want to grow the company.
Well, I, I'm, I'm sure you do, I, I know, you know, when you, when you approached this back in 2005, you know, you had, at that time, you thought within three years, you were going to be able to cover the entire city.
Right.
And of course, it's been, and I understand the changes in industry, I'm not trying to say that's unimportant. But something that, if you can, or if you would, if you're making that commitment, I would certainly encourage you to take a look at these places where, where you have not yet, and particularly some of them where it appears everything's ready to go, but for that margin, I don't know what that margin is, but maybe if some effort of that margin could be taken, and, and certain... Without, without a whole lot of new expense, other than maybe doing some marketing, so...
I can, I can commit to certainly, certainly reevaluate, and that's, you know, I think largely why we're here, I believe, and I understand that, you know, I, I just hope you understand that things have changed in, in the last seven years, industry-wide, and so, you know, we're doing the best we can, but at the end of the day, you know, we've, we've still got to pay the bills, so, so we'll do, you know, now, I will commit to conducting that survey, and, and, you know, like I said, we're in the middle of budget year, and we usually don't finish that until mid-December, so we've, we've got a, a month and a half here.
I certainly, again, one, let's say, I can personally vouch for the service, the product, and I, just as a member of the community, certainly also recognize, you know, all that ETC has contributed to as, as part of the business partnership here in the business community, so grateful for that. This wasn't to be, you know, we're not trying to grill you, I'm just, I just think it might be important for us to get a little update on what the intention was, and where it's at, and why, and, and maybe a little effort to, to see if, at least in those areas where there is interest, I, I know of interest, and see if I can't provide it.
Well, I certainly appreciate those comments, and we will continue doing the best we can.
Chad, I stop questions. I've seen large areas in our service, the South Main Street here. Would it help if the residents who are interested would also call, give you their residence address and their name?
Absolutely, we would, absolutely. We keep an active list of customers that require that are just outside of our, our service territory, so that when we just open a new area, we can contact them. So that, yeah, those types of interested folks, it certainly helps.
I don't know, City Hall here is a customer, of course, we have a fire roll, it's here, there, there's communications, there's a station, the bar stations, and all. They're replacing it, it was quite effective, but, you know, I'm also a satisfied customer of ETC, and people who are without, they know what we have, and they want it too, you have a good quality product, and they're wanting this service, I would try to, of course, ask them to hand, help them get it, of course, but it seemed like we approached you at a good time, in the middle of your budget.
Right, exactly.
And maybe we can, I'm trying to be salesperson for you, but I hope that you will call in, and your survey will back up a little bit. Chad, I sure appreciate you taking the time, kind of being here in a residential with us, and I know you would be able to sell everything that you can.
Thank you all very much for your time.
Appreciate you. Next item under new businesses is Rose Scoville.
Good evening, Mayor Herbert, members of the council, thank you for including us on your agenda tonight. I'm Rose Scoville with the Indiana Association for Community Economic Development. We've been working with the DSI to develop a plan for the North Central neighborhood that we'd like to present to you tonight, and talk a little bit about the adaptive reuse project planned for the North Central neighborhood. So we'll discuss area boundaries, the public input opportunities we've already provided, and talk about the DSI Adaptive Reuse Project at 915 North Ireland, most commonly known as the dress factory. The boundaries for the study area are really State Road 3, Broadway, Sheridan, and Michigan for US 421. And we've included that area in our study area. The black dashed line that you've seen, many of you are familiar with, is that is just the area that's not incorporated into the city at this time, so it shows up differently on, on the map. In terms of public input, we had stakeholder interviews with a number of people in the community. We also conducted a survey that was distributed door to door, we didn't have great return on that, but we did get some comments back. We held a workshop last month to learn the assets and issues of the neighborhood, and determine a vision for the neighborhood. And then tonight, at council meeting, has been advertised as a public hearing, although as the check, no one was signed in on the sheet, so you can open it as you wish. Survey input, we asked what they valued about the neighborhood. People have a good relationship with their neighbors, they like the close proximity that they have to a grocery store, the strength of the community, their updated park facility, and that there's a diversity of age groups in the neighborhood. Some of the concerns that they had were trash being left on property, or property not being well-paired for, some inadequate storm drainage or service system, animal and pest control, some drug activity, and unemployment, and financial difficulty. Some of these things are facing a number of neighborhoods right now, so it's not really surprising that they came up in the survey. At the workshop, we also asked the people who participated what the assets are, again, centrally located and close to locate destination locations. There's transportation options, including the bus service, that was really important to people. It's generally a quiet area, and they haven't experienced a lot of problems, and people use the park, and there hasn't been really any trouble there. Some of the issues that were identified at the workshop were that the sidewalks need repair or replacement to be able to connect people to the park better. And that the housing and water sites dictate that it's never going to be an affluent neighborhood, it's small homes and small lots, but a nice neighborhood. And there's no street lighting near the dress factory site, or generally in the neighborhood, and they'd like to see some more street lighting in the area. So the vision that we crafted for North Central is that it will be an area that prides itself for being safe and clean. The area will be walkable and welcoming, a place where people can visit, will be a place where people of all ages enjoy... It will be a place where people of all ages enjoy community gardens and pocket parks, and an enjoyable place for senior citizens. There were six goals that were developed to support this vision. And they are: safety, lower crime rate than the overall city of Greensburg; cleanliness, a place where it's noticeable wiggling; senior-friendly, transportation choices in public places that seniors would enjoy; parks and gardens, the neighborhood is well-connected to its park, and the park extends into the neighborhood through community gardens or pocket parks; that there's affordable housing options for seniors that allow them to age in place and enjoy the neighborhood; and that it's a walkable area that supports walking for transportation and strong pedestrian connections. And these goals are all included in the copy of the plan itself, which you should have copies of. So, all of this is in support of an Adaptive Reuse Project that Developmental Services Incorporated, DSI, is proposing at 915 North Ireland, an Adaptive Reuse Project to turn the old dress factory into senior housing. And it's a three-story building with, that will have thirty-nine senior apartments, one to two bedrooms each. They'll have aging-in-place features such as levers instead of knobs, and appropriate height sinks and work surfaces, wider doorways, features that are very senior-friendly. And they'll have about fifteen hundred square feet of community space that'll have computers and places to play cards, or just meet with other people that live in the building, or family members that come to visit. The preliminary site plan is included up here, a picture of the existing building. And then, even though it's a little hard to see, we wanted to include the elevation drawing, just so that you can tell that the windows will be restored, that are currently boarded up. And the brickwork will be restored as well, so that it won't be painted red in the proposed project. So, in terms of need for senior housing, just wanted to go over a couple of facts with you from the most recent census. Neither, nearly fifteen percent of the population in the census tract that includes this area was over age sixty-five in 2010. And a quarter of the households in that area had at least one person over sixty-five living there. Seven percent of the people over sixty-five in the area live in poverty. And another eleven percent of the area, less natural decline, will be over sixty-five in 2020. So, there's definitely continued need for senior housing in the community. And in all of our stakeholder interviews, that is something that people said, it'd be nice to have a dedicated senior housing facility in the community. So, what we're asking of you is support for the plan and the Adaptive Reuse Project through adoption of a resolution. Ideally, we would like to see you adopt the resolution tonight because the applications are due to the Indiana Housing and Community Development Authority for the low-income housing tax credits on November first. We're happy to incorporate any changes that you'd like to see made. We just need to know those in the discussion, but we can make those very quite easily. So, if you have any questions about the plan, I'm happy to entertain them. If anyone from the audience has questions, also with me are people from Keller Development and DSI, who can answer questions if you have questions about the specific project.
We might want to open the meeting right now. So, the meeting, public hearing is now open. Any questions?
Why don't they just tear that dress factory down and build something that's more energy efficient? That old thing has no way to make it energy efficient. Been there for a thousand years, knock it down and put something good up. It's just throwing good money after bad.
First of all, I appreciated the thoroughness of the information that was here. I mean, enlightening, really, about a lot of things. When was this public forum held?
Don, do you happen to have your calendar with you? It was a couple weeks ago. It was held out at Tree City, and all of the residents in North Central were invited through the, through the survey that was handed over to their home. There was also an invitation.
Is that at Tree City?
Yeah.
I don't know what you mean by Tree City.
Tree City Apartments.
In Western District.
Oh, okay, okay. And so, it was invited, the people that were in that area?
We invited the people in, within the boundaries of the North Central area.
And there, how many people showed up? Because the appendix here is supposed to have listed the participants, and it's blank.
That's just because I haven't inserted it yet. But there were two residents, and then a number of people from the DSI staff.
Rosie, September 5th.
September 5th was the date that that worked out.
I guess you've been working on this for at least two months, probably three or more. I'm surprised this is the first I've heard about it. Not that, I don't mean me personally, but I mean the council or any other kind of public.
I was interviewed by the mayor.
Right. Well, you had spoken to Dawn, and I tried to connect with you and wasn't able to. I also, both Dawn and I have had interviews with the mayor.
Well, I understand. I just, it just wasn't part of any kind of public conversation I was aware of. Just in background. So, it's coming with a little bit of suddenness as far as I'm concerned. And all the information in here, you feel pretty confident about, about the statistics and so forth here?
Oh, all of the demographic information? It's straight from the census and the most recent updates to the census. Now, it is for the census tract, because that's the only level that data is available. So, if you go to page twenty-eight of your plan, you'll see that the census tract alignment is not very friendly to this neighborhood and aligning it. And so, it actually covers two census tracts, but only a little bit in ninety-six, ninety-three. So, the data is from ninety-six, ninety-two, which extends well outside the city limits to the west and to the south. So, there's a little bit of problematicness in getting specific data for the neighborhood.
I'd say, when I looked at this, you said North Central population is eighty-one hundred, total population, three to eleven-five, that's seventy percent in that little triangle. It just, when I saw that, I said, can I believe it?
No, and that, and that's why I did explain the census geography a little bit at the beginning, on the top of page seven, and provide the map, the maps of the census tracts versus the study area, because they don't align well.
Yeah, so what kind of population are we talking about there in that whole section?
There's roughly four hundred households, so eight hundred to a thousand people.
Hey. Hey.
Right.
You've got lots of area there that's industrial or...
Right, I mean, none is included in that area. There's a lot of rural area.
The big tract, right, the eighty-one hundred.
And unfortunately, the census doesn't provide us with numbers at smaller geography than that that are very useful.
And this is going to be strictly low-income housing?
Right.
The project at the dress factory site is strict, is a hundred percent income and age restricted, based on the funding, the low-income housing tax credit funding, financing mechanism that would be used.
Do we have any information in terms of statistics here, demographics, the census, or whatever else, the realtor, whatever, about the need for low-income housing? I mean, how much stock do we have, how much pool is it? What's the general stock of housing here?
There is not a data source for the type of information that you're asking for. Individual property owners know their vacancy and occupancy rates and how many units they have. And, but it's really hard, no one centrally collects that information about occupancy. But in the key-person interviews that we had, and the people that we talked to, there is a general sense that there is more need for senior housing in Greensburg, and that people would like to stay in Greensburg as they age.
Yeah, I hope they can.
And we would like to do that, yeah.
I certainly support that quote. But I'm also looking at, we have one, two, three, several, I can't even name them all right now, that are also there for senior housing, everything from Skybird, September Place from years ago, and expanded on over the years. And maybe, maybe that's a point in time where we need to, again, I just, you know, what kind of a, other than talking to a few people, what kind of a research business model that you do in order to feel, have confidence that you're going to have a market for this?
Don, can you speak more to your market study?
Yes, hi, my name is Dawn Galloway. I'm with Keller Development, System Developmental Services, and the projects. Since you're getting project-specific, I wanted to be able to answer the question. We do a market study when we are looking at communities for projects such as these, and that is being done currently as we speak. But we did call, need properties ourself, we do that personally, I was in the market study, and made calls to find out there are a lot of waiting lists, and especially for secret housing, and especially for the loans, a very poor pool of units. So, Tree City Estates runs at least ninety percent, and it fluctuates between ninety, ninety-five percent. That's the property over at Westridge. That's not age-restricted, but it is sixty-four units of one, two, three, and four bedroom. Sixty of the units are low-income, sixty-four. So, we happen to know from that that there's that market here.
What's the price range you're talking about for low-income?
I knew you were going to ask that. Can I grab my paper real quick? Sorry, I should have brought it with me. When you say price range, are you talking about incomes?
Well, yeah.
Sure.
And you might have to explain the term low-income.
Sure, that's fine. Low-income for this particular type of project means anything in Decatur County, sixty percent or below the average median income. So, what that means on a senior property, like what we're talking about, is one-person household cannot make more than twenty-three thousand, four hundred dollars annually. For a two-person household, because it's all done by household sizes, that household cannot make any more than twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty. Those amounts go up yearly, but that's what they are for twenty-twelve. And those are for senior, typically one- and two-bedroom apartments.
The housing period, again, involved a couple of work there. They encouraged us to add clients to the need, the rental assistance, because of the need, but more, they were retiring. I guess they have seen that as well as, I suppose.
So, must it be something like driven apartments?
Yes, very similar to driven apartments.
I recently heard that September Place has had a waiting list for some time now. I don't know about Skybird, but it seems that's always full.
The housing, the housing of three, I believe, has seventy or eighty waiting lists.
Of course, there's...
I talked to someone from Northgate also, and I believe they're about ninety, ninety to ninety-five percent full. I believe they're government-subsidized.
Your group's law goes into government-subsidized, it's a, three dollars, nine, six hundred.
Trying to recall previous projects like this. I don't recall, and so, I'm trying to say something, sorry, I don't remember. So, maps, tucking it out so that we can get it correct. Remind me, or might not have different reason. I don't recall us doing this kind of a resolution or study with, within an area. We did something more in terms of market needs, a certain area, there was, right, different ways that cooperative arrangements were provided for to help enable that to happen. Why is it, why are you doing it in this manner with this kind of a section of...
Well, reflecting correctly, we did not do this. Like for Tree City Estates, the same type of funding we're going after for this project. The state puts out what's called Qualified Allocation Plan, about every two years. It used to be yearly, and they went to every two years. They detail within that plan the types of communities that they're looking for us to go at, go into to provide this type of housing. And so, they outline what they want to see us do when we're putting together these types of projects. One of the things that they came up with was being able to do a, like a neighborhood type of a revitalization, to take a look at not just your site plan, and not just what's happening right there with that project, but what's happening, happening in the immediate area, and how can you also be a part of that? So, they've asked us to kind of go a step further, integrate into the community, get out there and talk, have your neighborhood meetings, and present to council, you know, something about that neighborhood in a way that you can help the city improve that particular area by means of addressing certain things, and giving you various ways to go after funding for those types of improvements, not just what we're doing, but you have side of one.
So, to acquire this, does it add to the points?
Yes.
It's a competitive system where each project is trying to earn as many points as possible, and there's a substantial number of points available for doing this broader neighborhood plan that includes the site that you're looking at.
And as on tree city estates, when you develop that, there wasn't an immediate surrounding area. There's kind of by itself.
There was.
Yeah, I remember.
There's supposed to be things happening around there. Keep an eye out for that. It is known for it.
I think that the project sounds like it has merit, a lot of merit. In terms of, why did you choose, kind of, this general point? Looking at, on one hand, I think it's great that we're going to reuse something. On the other hand, you're talking about senior citizens, you've got a three-story building. How are you going to, how are you going to make that work? And why, why use that site?
Well, let me first answer that, because it kind of goes to the qualified, back to the Qualified Allocation Plan. The state is looking for us to find buildings that are dilapidated in communities and try to improve them, to help improve the community as a whole. So, you're going to see a lot of, well, maybe not green term, but in this whole state, you're going to see people redoing buildings all over with this type of, because that's what it's for. So, that's one of the reasons we looked at it. When I first heard about it and I saw the pictures, I wasn't sure myself. I brought the architect down, we walked through the building. He said, "Straw." He said structurally, the building is very sound, very well-built. I also worked with a company that does all of our energy diagnostics testing, so that we can make sure to make it energy-efficient. In fact, one of the things we will do is we will make the building look similar to, the windows similar to what they are, we'll use the same frame, but we're likely going to change out those windows, because they won't be energy-efficient either, we'll have to restore them, you know, back where they were. We're not going after historic tax credits, partially for that, because we want this to be energy-efficient for seniors, because they typically are on fixed incomes, and they can't make any more than what I've already told you, so we're very conscious of that. They do pay their own electricity, so we want to make sure that it's energy-efficient. So, the building will be tested, every unit will be tested for what's known as a HERS level out of relocating, which is very energy-efficient.
And you're going to use all three floors?
We are going to use all three floors, yes. What, you probably couldn't see very well, but we're going to have dorm rooms on that third floor to make the units up there, and I can't remember how many units I have on the third floor, but I want to think four to six, not a lot. But it's pretty creative, the architect came up with a really neat style, and there will be elevators, so it's fully A use, that's all.
And you've got thirty-nine units.
Thirty-nine units total, but on that third floor, there's only four, six.
Much parking.
We're working on that, in fact, we aren't at the ordinance, we're going to go for BVA, I think I'm at fifty-two here, when I'm at fifty-two spaces, right now. And what we found through other senior properties we have throughout the state is they're typically one-person households, a lot of the times, one to zero cars, so we think that it will meet, and I'm bringing some information to be able to help support that, because you don't want too much hardscape, and I'm excited that we've got a pocket park and some rain guards developed on the site, we really don't want to have to get rid of those.
As I recall, and again, I'm not sure if I remember this correctly, with the other projects that were done in similar, or exactly the same, but similar to this, were there tax credits provided?